It looks like we have both Maureen and Rachel here on, and yeah, Maureen just joined us on video. Let the record reflect that we have reconvened with all members present virtually. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May have a motion for the regular minutes of March 22nd, 2021.
I moved second.
Any council discussion or correction? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And a motion for the executive minutes of April 12th, 2021.
So moved second.
Already discussed under executive, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just a second, I need to pull up. All right. Welcome all for our May council meeting, first May council meeting of the month. And of course, May means that we're into, we have May Day, the first Saturday of the month. And the last year's was a bit different with, we were early in COVID and now being able to do a bit more, be socially distanced, we got quite a bit done. Started off a bit on the windy and chilly side as I think it was probably the first May Day that had a wind chill factor. But it was great to see the many work groups throughout town, much closer to a typical year. And afterward, as always, Madison looked great. So I want to thank all the volunteers that who came out. I got to work on one side of the railroad station with some great young Girl Scouts that were doing, back to couple and tried to, really wanted to carry the bag to mulch, but I suggested they had to wait a few years for that. But they really worked hard. And of course, Lisa Ellis, our Director of Business Development, who handles the coordination and get all the groups lined up. And DPW for getting the mulch to the various stations and then working on Saturday to move it around and do the final cleanup. And as the tradition also on May Day, we always honor Arbor Day. And so that was recognized in the fact that we are a tree city for this 36 consecutive year. And hopefully next year we'll be back out in the plaza of Hartley Dodge to hear the student home songs. And of course, the traditional Maple Dance. But this year we had a nice small ceremony at Summer Hill Park, the planting of a new tree organized by Jean Krokovia, the Chair of Shade Tree Management Board and Nancy Bruce, she always coordinates the event. And we'll have the flag to add to our flagpole in the coming days. Hopefully later this week we'll have it up there. The employee for the month of May, Jim Trimble from the Electric Utility Department has been selected as our employee of the month. Jim spearheaded the installation of a new automated electric meters throughout the borough, which will be completed this month. During the two-year project, Jim personally changed over 5,000 meters, managed the interns to assist the project. He also took the lead on the technology side by quickly learning the Honeywell Energy Access Diagnostic System associated with the new meters. Jim did all this while managing his usual utility reading duties and with adjustments that needed to be made during the COVID-19 pandemic. And like to, I'm going to shift in to present a few proclamations. And I think we have Winn in our attending right now. We can, if she is here, promote her.
Coming over, Mayor.
Hi there.
Welcome. Good to see you. It's been a while.
Thank you.
And
everyone.
Thank you for joining us today to accept the Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month Proclamation. And this is a, the first time we're doing this, so it's an honor to present this. And it's especially important as we look at what's been going on, going on around us. Not just the past year, it really moves the forefront, but it's been decades. So. Whereas the month of May was chosen as Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month to commemorate the immigration of the first Japanese citizen Nakahama Mongiro to the United States on May 7th, 1843, but also the anniversary of the May 10th, 1869 completion of the first Transit Continental Railroad built with the backbreaking labor of nearly 20,000 Chinese immigrants. And whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month seeks to honor and recognize the contributions of residents from Asia, India, and the Pacific Islands. And whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders make our nation more vibrant through the diversity of our cultures, languages, and religions. And whereas we celebrate and honor the invaluable contributions the AAPI communities have made to the arts, law, science, the technology, sports, and public service, including courageous AAPIs have served in the front lines of the COVID-19 pandemic as healthcare providers, first responders, teachers, and other essential workers. And whereas all achievements and the contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders enrich our history, society, and culture, we must also acknowledge the darker aspect of the AAPI experience in Madison, structural discrimination, prejudice, and injustice that most recently manifested itself in racial attacks, attacks on Asian Americans related to the pandemic. And whereas diversity represents one of the greatest, our greatest strengths. And by recognizing contributions and accomplishments of AAPI persons, the borough will put the values of inclusion into practice and to build a brighter future for our residents. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, the Mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body hereby proclaim May 2021 as Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month and encourage all Madison residents to learn more about the history of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. And with that, I'll hand off the proclamation to Winn. And please, do you like to say a few words about?
I love this. Through the magic of Zoom, I got this. Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Hey, Maureen. Hey, Deb. Hey, Rachel. Hey, John. Hi, everyone.
How are you?
Good to see everybody. And to the greater viewer audience out there, good evening. I'm Winn. I live here in Madison. So before I get started, I wanted to know a little bit more about our town and how many AAPI residents we actually have. So I looked on the American Community Survey and it was so interesting to me in that we have a little bit over a thousand Asian Americans here in Madison. And as far as foreign born and native born in general, between one in six or one in seven Madison residents are actually foreign born. So this was so interesting to me because, you know, I was like, wait, what does this mean for AAPI here in Madison and why we're doing this? It actually affects six and a half percent of your neighbors in Madison are AAPI. And that's not including AAPI children of mixed heritage, like my children, who are 50% Vietnamese and 50% Polish. So that was really interesting too. So this proclamation means a lot. And as you guys all know, and I, I know I'm talking to the choir, but we are all standing against bias, intimidation, and certainly violence, but we are not immune to it. We are close enough to New York City where a lot of that has happened. But let me just tell you a little story. My son Ethan works at Shoprite in Chatham. And he had an incident where there was an older lady who was, you know, just upset just how customers get. And her remark was, that Chinese man. And so he had a laugh about it. He's like, Mom, I'm so not Chinese. But I, it happened nine months ago at the height of COVID when we really didn't know. But certainly we have to acknowledge a lot of this AAPI violence and backlash that we have seen has really spiked if you look at all the numbers and data because of all the rhetoric about COVID-19. As someone who immigrated to this great country, let me just tell you really quick about my family story. We actually fought with the Americans to shepherd democracy in Vietnam. You guys call it the Vietnam War. We call it the American War. And after the Americans withdrew, all of my uncles were imprisoned for their, for their part in helping the Americans. So this work of democracy is something that we as a family have been involved in for generations. We really believe in it. We love America and democracy and what it stands for. And just a little humble brag about what I do. If you voted and used the ballot drop box in Madison, that was me. I worked with the Governor's Office and Legislature to get that done. I wrote three election bills and got it all passed into law last year, including the Ballot Cure Act, which helped over 25,000 voters in New Jersey from getting their ballots rejected. So the work of democracy goes on. And I am actually working on to get drive up and deposit drop boxes for our seniors and people with disability. So that is something that I would like to do because we do have a lot of seniors, especially in rural areas where they really need the help. So I am so grateful and I want you all to know and to really be intentional in looking around to see what kind of contributions Asian Americans do really add to our society and to our culture here in Madison and in the greater Morris County community. So with that, I want to thank you so much for having me and having this proclamation. This is certainly a point of pride that I have. It will be right next to the pen that Governor Murphy used to sign one of my election bills into law. So I will proudly hang that up. So I want to thank you all so, so much for this honor.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Winn.
Way to go. Thank you, Winn. Thank you for joining us today. And it's special helpful, you know, as we present these proclamations, think of its background. But to hear your personal family story is very, very enlightening. And thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Have a great night, everyone.
Take care. Okay, the next proclamation, which I don't think we have anyone officially accepting this, but it, we've been doing this for multiple years and every year it'd be, it's very clearly, clear that this becomes more and more important. Through the pandemic, the pressures have really increased on mental health. And as many of you saw, last week we had the flag at half staff in memory of A.J. Shaw, the Drew Student, who was found months after his disappearance. And it just reinforces the need for mental health that truly helps save lives. If we can, one, remove the stigma and work together to improve the mental health. So whereas mental health is part of overall health and whereas mental health sustains individuals' thought processes, relationships, productivity, and ability to adapt to change. And whereas nearly one in five Americans live with mental health conditions, which include anxiety, depression, schizophrenia, bipolar disorder, and post-traumatic stress disorder. And whereas youth's mental health is worsening with nearly 10% of America's youth reporting severe depression. And whereas early identification and treatment can make a difference in successful management of mental health illness and recovery. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic and resulting economic crisis has caused isolation, sickness, grief, job loss, food instability, and loss of routines, which has increased the need for mental health services. And whereas the need to protect people from COVID-19 has made it more challenging for people to access mental health services and harder for providers to deliver this care. And whereas mental health recovery not only benefits individuals with mental health disorders by focusing on their abilities to live, work, and learn, and fully participate and contribute to our society, but also enriches the culture of our community life. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body hereby proclaim May 2021 as Mental Health Awareness Month and call upon residents and businesses and schools to recommit to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illness and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illnesses promote recovery. And I note that the Rotary District has committed to being stigma free. And on May 22nd, there will be awareness event at the King's Road or the Prospect Parking Lot. All right. And our final proclamation today is Brain Tumor Awareness Month. Whereas an estimated 700,000 people in the United States are living with primary brain tumor and approximately 85,000 or will be diagnosed in 2021. And whereas brain tumors can be deadly, significantly impact the quality of life and change everything for a patient and their loved ones. And whereas brain tumors do not discriminate, infecting men, infecting men, women, and children of all races and ethnicities. And whereas brain tumors are the most common solid tumor in children's ages, zero to 14. And whereas hundreds of nonprofit organizations at a local and national level, including the American Childhood Cancer Organization and the With Grace Initiative, are helping children with cancer and their families cope through education, emotion, and financial support. Whereas researchers and healthcare professionals work diligently dedicating their expertise to treat and cure brain tumors. And whereas too many are affected by deadly disease and more must be done to raise awareness and find a cure. Now, I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body hereby proclaim May 21st, 2021 as Brain Tumor Awareness Month. Thank you very much for the, everyone going through quite a long group of proclamations, but also very important proclamations. We'll now move on to reports from committees. Public Safety, Council President Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. During the month of April, the Fire Department responded to 15 general alarms, eight still alarms, 23 investigations, 36 medical calls, for a total of 82 calls for the month. In addition, 45 fire prevention inspections were done and 34 smoke CO resale inspections were completed. The department had two department drills, firefighters trained on flowing water from the ladder truck, power saw operations on roofs, forcible entry, and hydrant connections. On Saturday, May 1st, at about 8:40 in the morning, the Fire Department responded with other neighboring departments to Chatham for residential structure fire at Hillside Avenue. A barbecue smoker located outside the house started the exterior house on fire. The fire was quickly extinguished by Chatham with Madison's firefighters assisting with checking for any extension of fire into the house and overhaul. And then from the Police Department. Madison Police Department is announcing that National Night Out will take place on August 3rd, 2021. Department in its commitment to continuing to strengthen the bond with the community will be seeking neighborhoods that wish to be involved in National Night Out. Stay tuned for more information on the Borough of Madison web Facebook page in the near future and check out Madison National Night Out webpage at rosenet.org for additional info. Corporal Stephanie Aquino just completed advanced training on mental health investigation and response and a community policing, community relations training course on April 29th and April 30th. Both courses inform law enforcement personnel on common mental health disorders they will come across while performing duties and methods and de-escalation when a consumer is in crisis. And the training further provides ways to strengthen the relationships with our community. And finally, all Madison police personnel are, including auxiliary officers, had training on biannual use of force and de-escalation training. Training is provided by the Rogers Group and all officers are required to complete a 50-question test following the training. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Finance and Borough Clerk, Ms. Kelly.
Right. Thank you, Mayor. From the Finance Department, the borough is monitoring the Colonial Pipeline shutdown and whether it is affecting the electric market. Right now, there is minimal impact on the spot market pricing. The pipeline carries gas and jet fuel, so it should have no impact on the natural gas market, which drives electric pricing. But the department had some questions about that. And so hopefully that's a good answer. This afternoon, the U.S. Treasury released initial guidance regarding funds for local governments under the American Rescue Plan legislation. Because our town's population is under 50,000 residents, our funds will be distributed through the state. Right now, there's no confirmation of the amount of our funding, when it will be dispersed, or what the eligible uses are going to be. And our CFO, Jim Burnett, will continue to monitor the situation. From the Clerk's Office, in anticipation of the June 8th primary election, the Clerk's Office will remain open for late-night voter registration on May 19th until 8:00 PM. And then application for vote by mail ballots and voter registration forms are available in the Borough Clerk's Office or online at morriselections.org. And a reminder to all Borough officials, council members, board, and committee appointees, 2021 financial disclosure statements must be completed by June 30th of this year. And alcoholic beverage control license holders are reminded that the renewal for the 2021, 2022 license season has begun and licenses do expire on June 30th, 2021. So please contact the Borough Clerk. And from the Tax Office, today was the last day of the second quarter grace period. So anyone who has not yet paid should contact the Tax Office for the correct interest amount. And that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And the Public Works of Engineering, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. In Engineering, Shafano Construction completed the initial mill and overlay program this past week, expending approximately $300,000 in municipal road capital. Strippers will return to complete crosswalks this week. Many residents have called in asking for additional paving on their respective streets. Madison has a detailed capital plan in place, which balances maintenance obligations with financial limitations. But those who still need resurfacing get higher priority based on actual conditions. Cefeli and Sons has provided contracts and bonds and anticipate starting work on Anthony Drive and Wayne Boulevard, starting May 24th. Hartley Dodge Memorial Plaza Restoration, a general contractor Merrill and Garaguso of Swedesboro, New Jersey, has indicated they are available to begin work once contracts are signed by all parties. The DPW completed successfully with six other towns, competed successfully with six other towns to acquire a slightly-used commercial snow thrower from the town of Carney. The equipment, if purchased new, would cost over $110,000. We won the bid and the cost was $60,000. The mechanics have been working on reconditioning the senior citizen van in anticipation of restarting free transportation services for Madison seniors. Staff participated in May Day activities coordinating the delivery of 1,500 bags of mulch to various work sites throughout town. Completed, completed catch basin and manhole repairs on various roads, which allowed Shafano Construction to complete milling and paving operations on Woodland, Linden Lane, Barton Street, Speracle Lane, and North Street. DPW was installing 330 of underground pipe, 330 feet of underground pipe to resolve a chronic standing water issue near the main entrance of the community pool. The work will be completed prior to the pool reopening Memorial Day weekend. Shade Tree Management, Madison celebrated, as the mayor indicated, celebrated Arbor Day on May 1st at Summer Hill Park. The mayor, council members, and Shade Tree Board members helped finish the planting of three new horse chestnut trees. Later in the morning, Cubs Cup Pack 124 spread mulch around trees and stone dust on existing trails. This is all part of a Summer Hill Park Improvement Program. 112 new street and park trees have been delivered and DPW was actively planting them. Some of the pear trees on Main Street are being replaced. Many of these trees have grown too big for their planting site, block business signage, and are infected with a fatal bacterial disease. This is part of a multi-year replacement program that began in 2019 and will continue for the next few years. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. And Community Affairs, Ms. Cohen.
I will add on that May Day was a great success. It was so nice to see people outside, out and about. Spent a lot of time at the train station with many of the high school students that were helping out for the day, which was nice. The next meeting of the DDC is scheduled for Thursday, May 20th at 7:15. Madison Farmers Market is going to start on Thursday, May 20th. So fresh fruits and veggies and other vendors will be there, 1:00 to 6:00 PM. The Madison Area Chamber, the Madison Area Chamber of Commerce is accepting nominations for their annual Extra Mile Award. This award recognizes Madison employees who provide exceptional customer service. Nominations must be submitted and postmarked by June 1st. More information can be found on the Chamber's website. The Chamber's Annual Awards Night is scheduled for Tuesday, June 8th at 6:00 PM at Shanghai Jazz. Tickets will be $55 and the evening will include light fare, cash bar, award ceremony, and door prizes. Fire extinguisher inspections will be held on June 4th from noon to four on the corner of Central Avenue in Maine. The event's open to everyone, $15 per inspection. So new and refurbished fire extinguishers will be available for purchase. The Madison Community Art Center Spring Ahead into the Art Series continues. May 14th is Arts by the People across the platform, spoken word and poetry readings. May 21st is Rosewood and May 28th will be the Morris Plains Community Band. There are other events coming up as well. Anne Fattell is having her annual recital at the center to be recorded for broadcast. The Madison Republican Club will hold a special event on June 15th featuring Gordon Chang. And there are ongoing activities coming up. And then finally, with the senior citizens, just to piggyback on what John said, the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee did meet and we are looking to get the bus running and to start figuring out how to get some more activities going for our seniors now that COVID restrictions have been eased a little bit more. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Utilities, Ms. Erlich.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Electric Department, the department reports that thankfully there were no power outages as a result of last week's windstorm, although electric crews have been busy trimming branches all over town that broke in the wake of the storm. The department received a phone call regarding a leaking pad mountain transformer on Rachel Avenue. And the crew discovered upon response, the transformer was leaking oil and the transformer across the street was also leaking. Both transformers will be replaced. And the department continues their project of installing LED streetlights on the roads identified for this year's LED replacement project. From the Water Department, the Water Department has excavated and replaced a fire hydrant on Broadview Avenue that had been struck and damaged by a car. The department also installed the water meter, pressure reducer, and backflow preventer. This is all equipment needed for the new fieldhouse at Dodge Field. And a final reminder, well, this won't be the final one of the summer, but finally, please remember to have your electric lawn water sprinkler rain sensors checked or installed to help save water and not operate on rainy days. The Water Department reminds us that we should reduce the zone times to a minimum because the water we use to have a green lawn is everyone's drinking water. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Health, Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mayor. In honor of National Nurse Week, we all want to just take this opportunity to thank our public health nurses and our health department, our school nurses, and all nurses who play a key role in keeping our communities healthy, especially during this pandemic. In regards to the pandemic, as of today, Madison has reported a total of 828 confirmed COVID-19 cases. Of these, eight are considered active. Since early April, there's been a sharp decline in cases of both Morris County and the state. This has prompted the governor to announce new guidelines which permit, which permits the relaxation of several restrictions effective May 19th. This new guidance includes lifting outdoor gathering limits, increased indoor capacities, and resumption of additional indoor activities. For complete details, visit covid19 nj.gov. As a reminder, all New Jersey residents 16 years of age and older are eligible to receive COVID-19 vaccine. Vaccines are now readily available on a same-day appointment or just walk-in. Visit rosenet.org for continuing updates on the vaccination program and locations, COVID-19 test locations, and other pandemic information. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And now on to Communications.
Yes, Mayor, Council received an email dated May the 4th from the Fair Ballot Project regarding revision of the New Jersey voting ballot.
All right. Now we're on to our first of two invitations for discussion. As always, this one is limited to items that are on our agenda and resolutions that are listed as part of consent agenda. I will go over those shortly, so you are aware of what those are. If you wish to comment on the items that I will outline, please click on Raise Your Hand. It's when you feel you want to comment. You don't need to wait until the previous speaker has finished. If you're on a phone, you hit star nine. When you are recognized and unmuted, first thing you need to state If you're on a phone, you hit star nine. When you are recognized and unmuted, first thing you need to state is your name and address. Failure to do so will may result in you being muted or disconnected. And then please state your agenda item for the resolution you're commenting on. And if it's not on, if it's a different item, we'll ask you to hold until our second agenda discussion or invitation or discussion later in the meeting. Please try to keep your comments to three minutes or less, but we will give you a one-minute grace period and have you stop at four minutes if you go over a little bit. And these are the following, and actually, just so you are aware, we have 20 people as attendees, including some Borough employees that will be elevated shortly as part of the presentations. The presentations that are coming or the agenda discussions or the gateway wayfinding presentation. Also, number two is the municipal radio system update. And then these are the following resolutions you may comment on, and please bear with me because I'm going from a screen as opposed to my usual paper method. Resolution 134 is authorize execution of the development agreement with RPM Development LLC for Walnut Street and Community Place. That's the affordable housing. As you know from a previous meeting, they were appointed, it was announced that they were selected to be our developers for those sites. Resolution 135 is authorize execution agreement for payment in lieu of taxes, known as a pilot with RPM for those two sites. And please be aware that in doing a pilot, that helps us be eligible for tax credits, but also reduces the borough's financial burden on the overall project. Resolution 136 is resolution appointing Christie Keel to the position of Police Office Manager in the Police Department. This is filling a vacancy. Christie was, has been in a position a long time for the Police Department and will be elevated to this position attractively to March 1st. Resolution 137 is rejecting proposals for partition master plan and authorizing re-advertising requests for proposals. They'll be revising the RFP and that will be going out. Resolution 138 is resolution authorizing Newt's King's Road Municipal Park lot by the Madison Area IMTA for exercise programs. Resolution 139 is supporting the Madison Environmental Commission Echo Scavenger Hunt, which will take place in the month of June. Resolution 140 approving property tax exempt status for tax block 706 lot 6 for wartime service connected disability. Resolution 141 is extending contract awards for daily computer networking maintenance and services to AI enterprises. And this is funded, this is in the amount of $62.50 funded through the operating budget. Resolution 142 is allowing foundation modification of mini lease for wireless communication on the Monopole on King's Road. And this is related to 5G upgrades. Resolution 143 is appointing Alice Chavez, position of substitute crossing guard. And Resolution 144 is approving renewal of livery order license for Madison Limousine Service. And this is Free Michael Evans Madison Limousine Service. And those are the resolutions you may comment on or the two agenda items like this outline. If anyone wishes to comment on those items, please raise your hand now. Being done, I close this part of the meeting. And excuse me, let me get back. And we now move on to our agenda discussions and we call up our, let's bring our professionals in for the wayfinding.
Hello, I'm John Bosio.
It looks like you've got your screen sharing or are we?
Yes, you should be able to see the screen with your logo on it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Deb, you want to tee this up or?
Sure, sorry.
Sorry.
That's okay. So the DDC started quite a while ago looking at gateway and wayfinding signs to make things around town easier to find, parking, different areas, that sort of thing. We had several proposals come in and met with, I believe it was three of them, if I'm remembering correctly. And they were chosen. We actually had our kickoff meeting earlier today to start gathering information. As the process goes through, and John may touch on this, we will be including the public at various points to get input on it, but I'm going to turn it over to John to discuss what we came up with.
Thank you, everybody. Again, my name is John Bosio. I'm with Merge and thank you for having me tonight. I mentioned we had a steering committee meeting earlier today to kick off the project. I'm just going to give you a really quick introduction to what we're going to be doing and sort of the things that we're starting to think about, and then we'll take any questions that you may have. Our team is Merge. We're an environmental graphic design firm and we're supported with Colliers, formerly Mesa Consulting. They are a New Jersey engineering firm that we've worked with in the past. Merge, like I said, we're an environmental graphic design firm. We focus on community wayfinding. We've done several projects over the years in New Jersey, but we've worked on large downtowns like San Diego and Phoenix and small historic communities like Annapolis and Savannah and some others. So hopefully we can bring a lot of lessons learned from those projects into Madison. We've done more than 100 different communities of all sizes and aspirations. So again, hopefully we can bring that experience to some of the issues we may run into while we're working in Madison. When you think about wayfinding, people often think that we come in and we just run around and we put up signs everywhere. That's not what we do. Signs are a big part of what we do, but we think of it really holistically. So at the very beginning of this process, it's very much a master plan where we're looking at all the different ways that people find their way. So from the moment they sit down and maybe decide to come to Madison, maybe for an event or to shop or to dine, what kind of information are they getting? How are they, you know, how are they using their phone to find their way? Is there a digital component or a layer of wayfinding that could be incorporated into this program? And then the environment and how that plays a role in your ability to find your way. So whether that is a landmark like the clock and you use that to give direction or just tell somebody to meet you by there, or if it's just natural paths or nodes that are around town that guide you, there are things that we take into consideration as well as support information, things like maps and brochures and visitor guides, posters and banners, all those things are wayfinding. So we want to make sure that the communication is really one voice. So whether it is a printed component of wayfinding, a digital component, signage, or even just your overall brand guidelines, we want to make sure that all those things are talking to each other and presenting one voice. And lastly, of course, the signage. So we're really going to look at the signage from, think of it big picture in. So the gateways coming into town, vehicular signs that may direct you around, getting people to parking. They get out of their car, they become a pedestrian. Is there a map or a kiosk that gives them information and then maybe pedestrian signage? Maybe interpretive signs that tell your story. So you really sort of work big picture in. We'll talk a little bit about a couple of those items because gateways, I think I did when we interviewed for the project, I did sort of a secret shopper. I came into Madison all by myself and just sort of made my way around. You know, your gateways are really unique in some cases and we'll talk a little bit about that. So we sort of identified a couple of things right off the bat that we wanted to look at and we'll continue to do this as we reach out to stakeholders. But, you know, you have a lot of different gateways into Madison and there's different sizes and different scales. But you also have the train station, which is also a gateway. So, you know, there's even different functions within how you are welcoming people to the borough. So those are different things that we will look at. Parking, I mean, that's a, that's a number one thing we want to look at is really get people back to the parking lot, park once and then, you know, make your way around. Obviously, we're in an historic downtown and we'll talk a little bit about that where we need to be really cognizant of that environment, but it also gives us very narrow clearances for signage. And then multiple approving agencies. So, you know, if we put anything near the train station, we'll have to involve the New Jersey Transit. Maybe there's some DOT coordination as well as just internally with the Borough Council Historic Preservation Groups in those. So all those things are elements we're starting to think about as we move into the project. If you think about wayfinding and putting a program together, there's sort of three categories of elements that we're going to be tackling. One is the strategy or really the administration of doing a wayfinding program. Who gets included? Where does the funding come from? What's the approval process? Who's going to maintain the system once it's up? So that's stuff that we will work through with the steering committee. Then there's the wayfinding of how do people get from point A to point B? What's the best route? Where do they park? How are we directing people? How are we making connections between, say, downtown and the parks department, right? So how can we make that connection? And then there's the design of how does it capture the character and the culture of Madison and the sort of the environment that's there as well as your brand identity. So all these things are components that we'll work through as we go through the project. As Deb mentioned, we're going to start to bring in the public into components of the system as far as gathering information. At this point, we're very much at its discovery stage of this. So we're going to have a public meeting where we introduce the project. When we get into the design, we'll be getting feedback. We'll be presenting three different designs for the, for the sign system. We'll look to gather that information. And then once we settle on it and you start to implement the system, it's really getting the information out to everybody, letting, you know, informing them about the wayfinding program. We started to put together a really rough preliminary list of destinations that are included in the system. What community wayfinding is geared towards nonprofit arts and culture attractions, parks and rec historic sites, education, transportation, those kinds of things. We don't direct to individual businesses or privately owned entities. You may do that on your digital component or you may do that on kiosks, but it's not something that you see vehicular signs for sort of private entity. So we always try to make that, that clear. But we just went over this with the steering committee. They'll be adding and subtracting to this as necessary with this destination list. I think one of the important parts that we identified in designing a system for Madison is that we're designing within a historic or traditional architectural context. So we really want to be evocative of the era, but at the same time, we do have guidelines of modern standards that we have to meet. People are in cars. They do have to see the signs at night. So we need to work that into it. But we're cognizant of working in a historic context as far as sign placement, distance from structures, clearance and scale. Really, scale is an important piece. The picture you see there is in Frederick, Maryland, where the core of their downtown is very historic and is very tight. And we really limited the messages, in their case only to two, so that the scale of the sign was appropriate to their, to their neighborhoods. And of course, we want to make sure that the material is durable and sustainable. So that's all part of the design process that we'll be coming back to you with. And then just lastly, the methodology that we're going through, I'll zoom in on this, but it's really a six-step process. Our steps are sort of the first five. We are at the very beginning, like we said, we had the steering committee meeting earlier today. We are at the wayfinding analysis and schematic design stage. So this is where we gather as much information as we can of how people move around, what some of the issues may be. And then we will design, we'll come up with three different design options to present to, to the groups. We eventually will move into programming, which is where the signs go. What do they say? The sequence of information that has to happen, sort of a more technical aspect of it. Design development, once we settle on the design, we'll then expand it out to all the different types of signs and ultimately documentation so that you can send this out to bid to fabricators to get bids. So there's two points I wanted to make about that. One is Merge, we do not fabricate or install signs. So we don't have, we're trying to do this for the least amount of signs, not more signs. The second is the system that we're designing replaces what's out there. We're not adding to, we're not creating more signs. What we're trying to do is coordinate and co-locate information so that we're reducing signage clutter and making it clearer and more understandable for someone to say, get to the train station or get to parking or find one of the attractions downtown. That's a coordinated system. Right now, you have signs, you don't have a sign system. And that's what the intent of the program is. Ultimately, you'll move into implementation and we'll be working with the steering committee to come up with funding and phasing strategies. Very early on, we'll have an order of magnitude budget and then we'll be able to come back to the council and say, you know, here are some priorities and here's how you might be able to cluster or group different sections of this plan. The very first part of this master plan, I always say that we can come in with 20 recommendations and you may decide to do all 20, you may decide to do two, that'll be up to you, but you'll at least have sort of informed decisions to make and you'll have pricing estimates to understand how much each sort of component might cost as you move forward over the years. So with that, that queue always drops out. I don't know why. Every presentation I do, that queue drops out and I can't figure it out. So anyway, I will take any questions that you may have, hopefully.
Just, I don't have any questions because I was just having, but just a couple of points that came up in our kickoff meeting. First of all, just be aware on slide, I have it at slide nine on what was sent to us. On that list of potential destinations, we have not really looked at that. That's what Merge came up with on their own. So things like, and this is nothing against Merge at all, but under Parks and Recreation, La Juanaque Brook Park is on there. That's not in Madison. We're not getting a sign for it, but we will look at these. These are just what they came up with and we will have input as to if this is what we want or if there's others that we want. We definitely are going to go with a phased approach for it as far as putting the signs in. And there were items talked about. One of the things with the train is people get off the train and then don't know which direction to go. So whether it's signs or maybe a small kiosk that they can find out, okay, Drew's up that way, M E T C is, you know, this way, that sort of thing to help direct them when they get off the train would be helpful. And the committee is made up of a wide variety of people around town and then we're going to bring it to some of the other area committees and like I said, ultimately to the public at a town hall type sort of setting and through surveys. So that's what I've got.
Thank you. And as has been discussed, this will help, you know, get people around town. As John pointed out on one of the slides where it's a parking, 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 we have multiple different types of signs for finding parking spots. You know, when you're in a new place, it's so much easier when you see a consistent sign. They all of a sudden you'd say, oh, if I look for that particular sign, now I can find the parking.
Your parking is behind the stores.
Yeah, yeah, and it's. Yep, which is, and it's, I have not been in Frederick, Maryland in years, but it's where my wife went to college. And I know that, you know, they've got some downtown, well-hidden downtown parking garages that, you know, would be missed otherwise. So and as Deb pointed out, what we saw right now is just the general process. So and any other comments or questions, so we don't need to get caught up in the, if you think of this place or that place, that'll come at a later time. Any other questions or comments? Okay, it looks like we're covered and we're looking forward to working with you and your team, John, and a lot more to come. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
And now we'll bring up Chief Lou DeRosa, who sides in the chief of our fire department is also our, one of our lead people in technology and communications.
Hello, can you, can you see me?
No, but we have your, we have the presentation.
Okay. That's, that's good. That's good. Good evening. And I'm just knowledgeable about communications enough to be a little dangerous. So. So let me do this. Hold on a second. That brings me up. Good. Anyway, good evening. I'm going to talk to you about my, the borough's proposed municipal radio system and it's a municipal radio system. Definitely not a fire department radio system. What we're proposing or what we've been looking at and working towards is a radio system that all entities within the borough and even outside the borough could use if so desired, like the Board of Education and such. But go to next slide, Michael, please. First, let's look at our existing radio system. And this is just a real quick snapshot. It consists of four separate radio frequencies and systems, primarily police. And they actually have two separate radio systems within their venue. The fire department, Madison ambulance squad has one and our Public Works has one as well. The majority of ours are at the end of life and virtually not supported any longer by the manufacturers. So we're at a crossroads where we, we really have to do something. As stuff breaks down, components and equipment just aren't sitting on a shelf. They have to be either repaired in a shop if they can be repaired or creatively replaced. And recently, we just had a voter go down on one of the police department's channels down at Chateau Theory at the senior center. And we had to get our radio guy in and he had to create a power supply and a way to feed it to bring it back to life. So it's got a Band-Aid on it and we're hoping it won't be a Band-Aid for much longer. We have five transmission voter sites and a transmission site receives and transmits radio signals. And a voter site just receives, brings it into the system and then it goes back out on one of the transmission sites. And they are the Kings Road Cell Tower, the Midwood Water Tank, Madison Avenue Water Tank, Redford Tucker Apartments and our Public Safety Complex. The two pictures you see there, the lower one on the lower left is our actual voters for all four disciplines. And then that's our couple of our radio transmitters up at the Midwood Water Tank. All right, Michael, go to the next one. So where are we today? Back in 2008, we filed for a new license in the 700 megahertz spectrum to get us out of the T-band spectrum is where we are right now. We filed back then for two reasons. One, we, we were getting, we were getting told by the FCC that they were going to be taking those frequencies away from us. And we were getting and are getting interference from radio stations down in Delaware because we share a very close frequency with them. And when the, when the clouds are right and the stars line up, we get some radio interference from them. So the 700 megahertz spectrum was opening up. Our, it was brand new at the time, so we jumped in and we were able to secure frequencies in that new system. We also, in 2020, recently, in discussions with, within the borough, with like the Public Works groups, with their radio needs and concerns. And, and we decided to hire a company called VCOM, a radio consultant that we've used in the past with our other radio projects. And he was hired to do what we call the coverage analysis and to apply for an FCC change to our conventional license, to a trunked license. Because we want to migrate to and move to a trunked system versus a conventional system because it allows us more, more channels and more groups to talk within that limited frequency space versus conventional, where you can only have one group or one discipline on one frequency at a time. Based on VCOM's coverage analysis, we were able to, we, he reapplied for it. We were granted a license modification in late 2020 to switch over to a trunked radio system. This allows us, police, fire, EMS and other department agencies to utilize the radio system. So Michael, go to the next slide, please. So the trunk radio system, it's designed to provide townwide coverage and adjoining area coverage, but more importantly, in building coverage. This is what enhances the safety of especially of our first responders. It is so important that once we leave our vehicles or move into a building, especially a concrete steel masonry building or masonry building, excuse me. We, we can lose contact very quickly. So when we talked with VCOM, our radio consultant, that was one of our big concerns. The map that you see there is coverage showing, showing two transmission sites. One would be at the Midwood Water Tank, or excuse me, at the Madison Avenue Water Tank and the other one at the Kings Road cell type site. The, the light blue and the dark blue gives us the best in building coverage. Green gives us okay, and then yellow and red gives us terrible coverage. So you can see at the bottom where there's a lot of yellow and some red and some green mixed in with that darker blue. That's down by Shumpike Road and it's got a ridge along Woodland Road, Woodland Avenue. And where it drops off, that's our weakest. So we're going to have a receive site at the Midwood Water Tank, which would give us a lot more reception or better, much better reception at that end of town. And also still allow us to talk when we get outside of that fringe area on that side of town over there. So we're going to move to a two base transmission sites, Kings Road and Madison Avenue with one receive at Midwood. And then one control site, which would be at the Public Safety Complex, which would be a backup to our fiber network. And basically, the way that trunk system works, we'll have six talk channels, which are all shared across all departments and will allow six simultaneous conversations to take place at once. And most conversations last under five seconds and not everybody is talking at the same time. And each channel can support up to 20 or more talk groups. So this thing can be carved up any way we deem it necessary within emergency services, within the Public Works Department and the like. Each department will be signed multiple port, talk groups and emergency responders are given priority within the system. So if they key up, police, fire and EMS, they'll take precedent over someone talking on the radio and a plow truck or the like. Michael, you can go to the next slide. So who will or could use a radio system? As I just mentioned, obviously, police, fire, Madison ambulance squad. Each would have their own separate groups, but we would all still be able to talk to each other. Interoperability being the key. The DPW and the electric department, they would have their own talk groups. And again, interoperability would be key as we can all talk to each other. Presently, we all can't talk to each other. Only fire, police and medical can talk. DPW and electric and the other utilities can't talk to us unless it goes through our dispatch center and they have to act, act as a go between between us. In one of the conversations I had with Jimmy Matina a while ago and Dave Artigler in the electric department, one of their big concerns is the radio chatter that goes on in an emergency. And they're trying to focus on high tension wires and working in the substations. And they don't like to be distracted by non-necessary talk. So they, they would really like to have their own channel for those specific emergencies when they need to be segregated and focused on their job. So this would definitely allow that and then some. The other agencies or groups that could use it, the building department, the Board of Education. One of the things with that, and I've been working on this project with now Captain Joe Longo for a long time with the school resource officers. They have to carry literally two radios just so they could talk to the groups within the school and then talk to police headquarters. And because they're on different radio frequencies. If we can get the Board of Ed to come on board with being part of the talk group. Each school could conceivably be their own. They could have groups within the groups, groups on top of the groups. Interoperability would definitely be a tremendous benefit for a medical emergency or any other kind of emergency or event going on. That could be used as part of the senior van to have constant communications with that as opposed to a cell phone. And special events like Bottle Hill Day, Memorial Day, Christmas Parade, things like that, where a group of portables could be handed out, utilized for that event. And then collected back up and used for another event. So there's a lot of advantages and it's all done through in-house programming on the system. And Michael, you can go to the next one. And finally, the cost. We, we drilled down pretty deep and hard on this and based on VCOM's recommendations, although they haven't designed the system yet, they have got a good feel for what it could cost. And we're looking at about 1.3 for the backbone part of the system. Those are the transmitters, the, the antennas, the, the components that make the trunk system work. We're very fortunate that our existing sites, the Kings Road Cell Tower, the Midwood Water Tank and the Madison Avenue Water Tank, all have generators, all have our fiber network too. We already, already have a path to make it work. So that, that foundation, so to say, is already there. This is just the equipment that would have to be installed and replace our existing stuff. And then we would have to purchase additional mobiles and portable radios to be outfitted in vehicles and handed out throughout. Recently, I guess about two, three years ago, we purchased some portables in the fire department. Those are those lime green ones you see there. And the police department purchased similar ones. Those portables are redeployable. They have to be just flash upgraded to accommodate the new 700 spectrum. And then they, they go right back into service. Our older portables can't do that. And in fact, they're quite old, so they'll be replaced on a one for one basis. We've also recently applied through an AFG grant, assistance to firefighter grant. And this time we applied in conjunction with the ambulance squad. After we got rejected last year, Kyle Wickman, Lieutenant Wickman in the Fire Department sat down and sat in on a seminar. And I believe Ray Cody did too. And we made some contacts with some grant people and we've talked to other people who've gotten radio grants in the past. And hooking up with another organization kind of with that interoperability portion of it coming into play seems to work. And we've changed stuff around to, we've learned it's not what you ask for, it's learned how you ask for it. And so Kyle put together a grant. We've already gone through the first round, haven't been rejected. And we hope to hear definitively by the end of the summer, if we get it or not. If we do, that's 330,000 that comes off that 615 figure right above it. So and that's, Michael, go to the next slide. And that's pretty much it. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if I can.
Thank you very much. That really helps us understand the why.
Did I lose you?
The efficiency going forward is so, so important. So and looks like my internet connection might be unstable. So I, hopefully you can hear me.
I got you.
Okay, and you know, there's been some discussion as far as money that we have sitting in reserve right now. And this is one of the major projects that we have been planning for, which is one of the reasons why we've had to build up our capital reserves. So any comments or questions from the council, Austria and then Deb?
Sure, I have, I think, two, two questions. Chief, does the system work like 24/7? It likes, let's say if we had a townwide blackout, would the system have some way of continuing? If there was some catastrophic, you know, blackout?
Yes, as I said, all the, all our existing sites, Midwood, Kings Road and Madison Avenue all have a backup electric power, backup generators at those sites. So if we had it like we did during Sandy and Stormy Gett and everything, those backup systems work. They're all interconnected through our fiber network. Now, if the fiber network goes down, there's a backup within the system that makes it work as a radio. We may lose some coverage areas, but on a mid, you know, marginal area, but we would never be 100% down. Each one of the sites, Kings Road and Madison Avenue, they work in a simulcast method when they're operating correctly, meaning they both transmit together at the same time. If one site would go down, then the other site would pick up the slack and vice versa. So there's redundancy built into the system and it's a robust system that we have.
And, and then my second part of my question is, under the current system, has, are there examples that you can show us where it sure would have been nice to have DPW or the electric department on with the fire department and the police department?
Well, in, in, it would have to be, it would definitely be recent major storms would come to mind. Sandy, Stormy Gett, and when we had that little, I guess tornado or come through not too long ago, when, and it's not so much to talk on the same channel. It's sometimes being able to listen and monitor each other's channels. So you can jump, either switch a channel on the radio and talk to the other, something as simple as I need help with this. Or, you know, like we were on Glenwild during the first, during that last storm we had. And we had wires come down and the fire truck was stuck in the roadway. We couldn't move out of the road until we got Public Works there. Rather than go through dispatch to contact Public Works and give them the best way to come in. If we could have communicated directly with them, it might have made that happen a little, the rescue happen a little bit easier of them getting to us. But interoperability, it was something that was brought out on the 9/11 commission. And having the, just the ability to do that, to switch a channel and talk and or monitor is a great benefit to all of us. So that's one of the reasons we're pushing for the one system that we can all share.
Okay, thank you.
Before we go to Deb, I just want to clarify a statement I've made. We have not asked an ordinance at this point to encumber the money, nor have we created a reserve for this particular project. But I meant to say is it's a line up in one of the major projects that we see coming forward. And so we need to have the funds in place to make this happen. And obviously, this is an important one.
Um, so just to piggyback off what Mayor Bob is saying, we have known this is coming. You've presented to us before and I fully support it. I love the idea of possibly sharing services with the schools. It's something we're looking at increasing and coordination of efforts, especially if a wackadoodle storm hits in the middle of the school day, that they would be able to communicate through the SROs with you all and amongst themselves, which I think is great. I have to wonder, and Ray, I don't know if you can answer this or I can follow up with Jim regarding the American Rescue Plan. If maybe we can use some of the money from that for this. I know we're hoping to use some of it to help our downtown. We haven't really talked about it because we still don't know the rules. So I don't want to make it sound like we've committed to anything, but it's just a thought, maybe some of the money could potentially come from that to help aid in this. That it really truly sounds like it's for the whole town and it will help everybody along the way.
Mayor, I can respond. I mean, basically, the US Treasury today announced the general guidelines for towns of 50,000 population or higher. They did not announce the funding levels or the rules and the eligible uses for towns under 50,000, which is where we would fit and where most of the towns in New Jersey would fit. So they've indicated that guidance will be, and they use the phrase in the coming in the fourth, in the, in the next few days. So we're waiting for guidance. And as Austria indicated in her report, our funds don't come directly to us. Whenever they tell us what that amount is, they go to the state of New Jersey, which then has a period of time to add their own rules and then make the dispersments. The dispersment, the only guidance they've given us so far is that the first payment will be sometime in this calendar year. We don't know what that amount is, 50%, and the remaining 50% will be paid approximately 12 months later, the balance. But to be defined, so we just, we don't have the timing, the amount or the eligible uses. Other than that, we know everything. So.
Yeah, potential capital or capital is mentioned as a potential, but as you said, we, we won't be discussing the actual usage until we know the exact amount and timing.
Wanted to ask Chief Lou, and thank you for the great and very lucid, clear presentation that unpacks a complicated technical topic. Are there certain time pressures that we are reacting to here? I know it's been in the works for a long time. We got successful, you know, transition to the trunked license last year. So I know there's been a lot of steps to prepare for this. Is there a deadline coming up or something that is causing us to need to act expeditiously at this time? Or are we just getting to the point where we've laid the groundwork and we're ready to move forward on our own schedule?
There's two parts to the answer to that question. One is our equipment is dying on the vine. That's kind of pushing us to do it sooner rather than later. When we did apply or reapply to change from conventional to a trunk system, that reset the shot clock for development. The FCC, once they give you that licensing, there's a period of time, and I believe it's two years to be up and running. If you can't do that, you can apply for what they call a slow growth, which will extend that by years. So you have time to finish it, but we don't have the time right now to do it. I mean, our radio system is holding together and it's working, but the hiccups are. the hiccups are, are happening more frequently, and the sooner we do it, the better we can, in better shape we're going to be. But we don't have a lot of time, but we have some time. And like I said, that AFG grant, if that comes through with the, in the, you know, the end of the summer, that's a, a nice chunk of money that's going to help us out in addition to any other funding sources. I don't want to wait.
Any other questions or comments for, for the chief? Chief, again, thank you for all your work on this project and, and the presentation that I think can be very helpful, and we'll be working together and make it happen.
Okay, thank you. And I did just, I've been working on it, but listen, Joe Longo, and there's a few others, Kyle Wickman, and we've been working as a team for a long time on this, so I can't take all the credit. We, we got to share.
Thank you. And now we move on to ordinances for hearing. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance is scheduled for hearing. Were introduced by title and passed on first reading at the regular meeting for the council held on April the 26, 2021, all were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting scene.
I call up ordinances for second meeting. Ask the clerk to reset ordinance by title, ordinance 18-2021.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 34 of the Borough Code entitled Police Department amending procedures for review of the ranking of candidates.
I now open the hearing on ordinance 18. Anyone which should comment on this hearing, please hit the raise hand or hit star nine. Again, this is only for this ordinance, and same guidelines are in effect as far as common time. See none. I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 18-2021.
I second it.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 18-2021 adopted and finally passed and ask the clerk to publish notice, save a newspaper, and file the ordinance according to the law. Call up ordinance 19-2021.
An ordinance amending regulations pertaining to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund in Article 8, Affordable Housing Development Fees, Section 195, it's section, it's Chapter 195, Section 46 of the Borough Code.
I open the hearing for ordinance 19. Anyone which should comment, please raise hand or hit star nine. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 19-2021.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 19-2021 adopted and finally passed and ask the clerk to publish notice, save a newspaper, file the ordinance according to the law. We're now on to our second of invitations for discussion. This one is when you can make, make comment on any topic. Again, same rules are in place, that you click on the raise hand or star nine if you're on the phone. When you are recognized, please state your name and address, and then you may start, start your comments. And as always, we ask you, try to keep your comments three minutes, but we'll give you a one-minute grace and stop you at four. Anyone which should comment, please raise your hand now. Seeing none, I now close the invitation for discussion. We now move on to introductory ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Okay, now it's working. Ordinance is scheduled for first reading. Have a hearing date set for May the 24th, 2021. All be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading. Ask the borough clerk to reset ordinance by title, ordinance 20-2021.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $60,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a snow thrower and accessories for the Department of Public Works.
Mayor, I move ordinance 20-2021.
I second.
And this was part of John's report of the ability to buy this snow thrower at nearly 50% off what it would normally cost. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
We now move on to consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move Resolution 134-2021 to Resolution 144-2021.
Second.
Any discussion or any that need to be pulled? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Okay, yes to all, but I abstain from R 138.
138, okay. Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
All right, there is no unfinished business. Approval of vouchers. Will the clerk please read the voucher totals?
It's for the current fund, $574,387.55. For the general capital fund, $292,194.70. Electric operating fund, $971,601.41. The electric capital fund, $2,177.29. For the water operating fund, $34,553.55. And the water capital fund, $12,120. From the trust, $26,361.18. The total is $1,911,395.68.
Can I have a motion to approve?
The moved.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
There is no new business. Mr. Landrigan?
I move that we are adjourned.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. You know, to all, a good week. Take care. Be well.